Calls are the City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1344, October 21, 2019. Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk call the roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Uh, motion. Mr. Burns?
Move to excuse Councilwoman Herbie.
Second.
Move and second that we excuse Councilwoman Herbie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Herbie is excused. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. You should have all got copies of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, minutes will stand approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is item number three, presentation, Business of the Month Award, CTL Engineering. Paul Brim.
Mayor members of council, thank you very much. Tonight's award winner is CTL Engineering. They are a full-service consulting engineering, testing, inspections, and analytical services company. Formerly known as Columbus Testing Laboratory, CTL was established in 1927 as a privately-held engineering firm. Today, the company is an industry leader in this highly-competitive field with a staff of more than 250 people at several offices throughout the Midwest. Their team includes engineers, chemists, geologists, hydrogeologists, testing specialists, certified welders, and technicians. The company opened its Greater Cincinnati office right here in Forest Park in 2010 after acquiring and renovating an underutilized building in the Crossways Industrial Park. The company has grown steadily ever since, and recently it expanded their vast array of services to include environmental engineering and consulting services. The company has achieved an award-winning record of success. Inc. Magazine ranked CTL as one of the fastest-growing companies in America, and E N R Magazine ranked the company in its Top 500 Professional Firms. From soils and geological work to foundation evaluation to construction, testing, and inspection, CTL Engineering is your one-stop shop for the very best in engineering services. We're certainly fortunate to have this company as a member of our growing business community, and in recognition of their outstanding record of success and the recent decision to expand services offered at its Forest Park location, it's our honor to recognize CTL Engineering as our October 2019 Business of the Month. And accepting the award tonight is Senior Environmental Project Manager George Humaldorf. George.
Right, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have a...
So, the City of Forest Park Business of the Month, CTL Engineering? Can't hear me. CTL Engineering is our Business of the Month for October. Excuse me, on behalf of the City of Forest Park, this is in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to have a word?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure for us to be here in Forest Park, and we look forward to being here for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. Recognize, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meeting is a tape recorder for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the council? If so, come forward and sign in. Ain't no... Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, council ladies and councilmen all. I'm here for about three comments tonight. First and most importantly, as Chair of the Economic Development Commission, I wanted to address the issues of open seats on the Development Council. And I was out the last two weeks, so maybe you resolved one of them two months ago. But we had an open seat, and I was wondering if the councilman news... And our council liaison is not here. Do we have any open seats, or did we fill that seat?
Good question for Human Resources.
Oh.
For Clerk of Council, do we have any that you're aware of?
As far as I know, we do not.
Same?
As far as I know, we do not.
No.
We were thinking that there would be an opening with Mr. Miners, but that has changed, so he's now continuing, and so that would leave...
Was Katrina signed on? Has she been sworn in?
Trevina? Yes, Ms. Adams has been sworn in.
Oh, that's great.
No, she has not been sworn in, but she was approved.
Well, she was approved by... Well, we didn't have anything against her being recommended for our commission. We would have liked to have had her on.
That's up to the Human Resources Committee and their process. So, whenever they get excited, they will do that. They will take care of that matter.
Okay, and that's Councilman Holt and Ms. Herbie? That's the Human Resources?
Yeah.
Okay, because last year we had five meetings where we did not have a quorum. And we get some pressing issues from the Economic Development Department whereby we need to vote on incentives and so forth for businesses to stay or improve in our area. So, if we don't have a quorum, that makes it kind of tough to approve.
Mr. Stasny, realistically, all you do is make recommendations to Paul. Paul decides what course of action to take. So frankly, having a quorum is not in and of itself an issue. I know it's... There's been a presumption of that's the way it ought to be done, but it's not actually...
Okay, then. I've been working with the commissions who have thought that was the case all the while. We always had a vote, and it had to be in a majority in order to pass that recommendation for Mr. Brim to pass on to you folks.
He would be the deciding factor as to what he brings to us.
Okay. All right, so that was the main point of my being here tonight. The second point was I wanted to commend the city and Ray Gwynn's Department for the aggregate utilities movement this year. I know it has failed twice in the past, and I've mentioned to different departments that I thought it was because of a lack of push by our city regarding getting out information, because certainly it's a benefit to all the residents to have that aggregate utility issue put into place. And I was at the first meeting. We're Mr. Dieter's, and I forget the association he's with. But he did a good job presenting that to the audience. And then, there were about 25 of us there. And while I was gone, out of town, I understood there was about 70 at the next meeting. So, I think we're getting the word out pretty well, and I'm hopeful that that will pass on the November ballot.
Yes. Again, obviously, as individuals, we, the council, support those efforts, but we... You know, this is another one of those issues that is citizen-driven.
Yes, sir.
And we, as a body, does not take a position one way or another because there are citizens on both sides of the issue.
Right, sir. That's what my understanding was. And...
I concur, and I'm glad to see the number of people that was out. I think they did a good job in their presentation. I believe also that a lot of the questions that people have had about this issue in the past, I should say, that questioned but missed were dispelled, and the outcome may be very different.
And I think there's a third meeting coming up on the 28th or thereabouts?
I think it's tomorrow.
Oh.
I believe it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you for coming, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, Paul.
Mayor, if I could beg your indulgence, I apologize. I was neglectful of my duties here, but Mr. Humaldorf asked if we could do a picture for their newsletter and everything, so if I could ask maybe you and Ms. Ness to come back up. My apologies.
I wasn't standing the line.
That's what happens when you get old, I guess, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
If anyone else in the public would like to address the body? Ain't no one. At this time, we would entertain a motion. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the agenda and take up at this time Item B, under New Business, to appoint a candidate to a board or commission.
Second.
And move and second that we amend the agenda and take up at this time Item B, under New Business. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend the agenda?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda, pass a six to zero. At this time, we will take up Item B. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to make a motion that Ms. Annette Dean be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring 11/30/2019.
Second.
And move and second that we appoint Ms. Annette Dean to Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring 11/30/19. Is there any discussion?
Thanks for volunteering.
Hearing none, is this Voice, Sally?
Is that date correct, 2019 or 2020? Is this an uninspired term? I mean, an exp...
Mr. Mayor, it is. The date's correct. That's the term that's open right now, but it'll be filled because we have to have certain terms open. So, she'll fill this term, and I'm sending letters out now to the people who need or who want to serve another three years. So, she'll receive a letter if you want to serve another three years.
Thank you.
I believe this is Voice's vote?
Yes.
And all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Annette Dean.
And solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio?
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
Of the city?
Of the city.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
As a member?
As a member.
Of the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Of the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a long week, long day. That's how bad it's been. But no, thank you, guys, and I look forward to working with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item number five. And I would say, at this point, as always, Ms. Dean and Mrs. Smith, if you would care to leave, you might. You can stay if you like. It's up to you. Sit down, Mrs. Smith, please. Number five, reports of standing committees, first being Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time. Just a couple of things of note. Halloween is coming up, and our fire department has issued some safety tips that you can find online. Although we are a very safe community, please be cautious about your kids out in the nighttime and whatnot, and going up to homes that are not well-lit for safety reasons. Also, our Harvest Fest is coming up on the 26th, which is this weekend. We'll have a really great time. That'll be kind of in this area, near the municipal and fire department and the senior center. Also, our fire department did participate in the Home Depot Safety Fair, so that was very well-attended, and some much-needed information was given to our residents.
Thank you. I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session next Monday. Do you have any to add?
I would like to continue the conversation.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Should have done this before. The work session next week is going to be devoted primarily to a financial report from the Finance Committee. I would ask, unless there are... Now, there are some items that we will have to deal with. They would be under the line, below the line, and we will move those off until the following work session. It is essential that we have this work session regarding finances next week. So, for that reason, I am going to ask that all other items, with the exception of metro routes, be placed on the following work session. Okay? Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Yeah, she was... That's what I...
I was...
She was gone, but I asked her to postpone that a week after.
The only question I do have, though, is if we have a question that can pertain to that, to the budget or to finance, if that's something that we may consider. I don't know. You'd have to make that decision, I guess, if it would make any sense to be on the...
That, okay. If you can get it to me, I will, because frankly, I don't know all of what the... I don't know what all they're gonna cover in their report. It may be something that's gonna be... I can tell you it's gonna be a very in-depth report that will probably cover most of the things that has to do with budget and city finances. Okay? But if you have something specific, if you would let Don know.
I will.
He will be able to...
The following from our congressional committee we have with the department.
Okay. Next report is Ways and Means. Councilwoman Herbie is absent, and as I just stated, the Finance Department will be doing an extensive briefing on the 28th. This takes us to the next report, Community Development. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening. However, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none. Mr. Burns, you will have a below-the-line item. There will be a routine report regarding assessments. Assessments. Next report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time, however. I am available for questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none. Move to next report, Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, you also will have a below-the-line item, which would be a routine item dealing with the contract for Clerk of Council.
Okay.
Next report would be Public Improvements and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to inform the residents regarding fall prevention training sponsored by We Thrive, and it's for seniors on Tuesdays at 10 o'clock. And so, if you're interested, please come out and join us. I attended this Tuesday, just to do a brief introduction on fall prevention and risk factors for falls. And so, we do encourage residents to come out. It's wonderful training offered through... The curriculum is through the State of Ohio Transportation. And so, we just want to make sure that residents come out and take advantage of this free service.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none. Councilwoman Moore, you will have one item that would be... The second item that will be above the line at the work session, metro routes. Next item, Intergovernmental Relations and Communication. There would be, my committee, I have no report. There will be a number of items below the line for that meetings, all having to deal with upcoming contracts that we must approve before the deadline. That would be the magistrate's contract, public defender's contract, and the prosecutor-law director contract. That's within my report. I would answer any questions if there are any. Okay. Hearing none, we would go to item number six, the mayor's report. I have no specific report. I would just add to what was... Something that's already been said. The annual Fall Festival will be this Saturday. Hopefully, we all can come out and participate in that event for the children of Forest Park. It's always been very successful, and hopefully, it will continue to be so. And also, at the next meeting of the council and at the next work session, we will announce the dates for the council's winter recess. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, would be the City Manager's report.
We have the... The department reports have been filed and are available for consideration. A couple of other things as well. I wanted to give you an update on our code enforcement numbers. Since we started our new processes in the first part of September, we've had approximately 222 citations over this five-week period. And obviously, they were between September 3rd and September 27th. Grass and so forth were a significant amount of the citations because the grass was growing. Now, it's... We still have the trash container storage and inoperable vehicles that are still kind of there as well, but we will be continuing the process and trying to move forward and get ready for next year. We are looking at some new software and some new processes to be more efficient at what we do. Again, the main thing is to just have people know what the rules are and to do their best to comply with the requirements for code enforcement and property maintenance so that everybody's property gets improved and everybody's property values stay... Aren't driven down by, you know, one individual who might be hurting the whole street. So, that's the citations. You notice, we're getting ready to do our Fall Newsletter. It'll be coming out in the next... I reviewed it today, so it should be coming out either later this week or early next week. The... One of the things that is in there is smoke alarms. The fire department will be passing out smoke alarms throughout a certain part of the city, but if anybody needs one, please contact the fire department and make arrangements to get one if you're not visited by them on the sections that they're going to be going door-to-door. We're finalizing our health care renewal. We've met with the employees, and we'll be getting that information back to City Council probably at the next meeting. And there is a... One of the citizens pointed out to us, and I wanted to make sure that if anybody's listening, Medicare renewals and Medicare questions. The Higher Department of Insurance is doing several Medicare Q and As across the region, some of which are in Green Township. Some of them are at the Sharonville Convention Center. And we're trying to get... Contacted the Higher Department of Insurance, and we're trying to get us on the list to host one as well. But we will have a link to that on our website. If anybody's out there and has some questions about Medicare, some of our senior citizens, then we're gonna be passing this out at the senior center as well. That link to call. You can make an appointment. You can go to these seminars. And so, if anybody has any questions, we're gonna provide some information where they can go find some answers, and hopefully, we'll be able to schedule one of the... One of their sessions here at our senior center. But right now, there aren't any scheduled. But again, there is some information out there for our seniors, and we'll be publicizing on our website and also at the senior center as well. So, other than that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions for City Manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Move to item number eight, other reports, versus those being Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report tonight, but I would answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Wyckoff? Next item would be... Next report would be Clerk of Council, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 26-2019 and resolution numbers 33-2019 through 36-2019 were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you. Next item is item number nine. Is there a motion? Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolution Number 37-2019 by title only. This resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
Move and second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolution Number 37-2019 by title only. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Collins?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Motion to suspend, pass a six to zero. First item under New Business is Item A, Resolution 37-2019. Would Clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 37-2019, a resolution in support of State of Ohio Capitol Budget Funding for connecting the West Fork Mill Creek-Greenway Trail, the Greenway, with the great parks of Hamilton County's Winton Woods Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 27-2019.
Second.
Thirty-seven.
I'm sorry. Thirty-seven-2019.
Second.
And move and second that we adopt Resolution 37-2019. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes. As stated above, this resolution is to show Forest Park's support for the State of Ohio Capitol Budget Funding for the West Fork Mill Creek-Greenway Trail with the partnership with Winton Woods Park. Staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the role on Resolution 37-2019?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes. Resolution 37-2019 passes 6 to 0. Next item on the agenda is item number C, a motion, Councilwoman Holt.
That was done already? Oh, this motion?
C, yeah.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to receive the general fund summary report as contained in departmental reports.
Second. Been moved in second to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental report. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any further business to come before the body?
May I make just two announcements?
Sure.
I forgot about. I apologize. Our youth basketball sign-ups have already started. That's through K kindergarten through 12th grade, and those are being accepted through October 28th, which is next Monday. And also, the seniors' fall feast is scheduled for Monday, the 28th, which is also, again, next Monday at 12:00 PM at the senior center.
Thank you. Any further business? Any more announcements? Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. We're adjourned.